Good evening, everyone. My name is David Fries. I hold the office of Mayor of Tonka Noxy. Calling to order this regularly scheduled meeting, only meeting at an earlier time for November 1st, 2021. Mr. Porter, would you mind counting me present and then call the roll, please?
Ms. McCutcheon.
Here.
Ms. Stevens.
Here.
Mr. Hempel.
Here.
Mr. Donnelly.
Here.
Mr. Dale.
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel, we have Christian Seacrest here today, who's going to give us a presentation later, so he's going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Take it away, Christian.
Thanks, sir.
Item two is the approval of minutes. Does anyone have any corrections, questions or concerns, or is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thanks, Ms. Stevens.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously, Mr. Porter. Item three is the consent agenda, reviewing of bill payments. If anyone has any questions, concerns, discussion, or a motion?
I'll motion to approve.
Thanks. Thank you, Ms. McCutcheon.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Passes unanimously, Mr. Porter. Did we have anyone sign up to speak during open period?
No signups.
All right, thank you. Then we'll move to old business. There is none listed on the agenda, that is correct. We'll move on to new business, Resolutions 112101. Mr. Brekovic.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. So this item was continued from the previous meeting, and I'm going to ask for another continuation this evening. We're in the final stages of getting a document ready, but we didn't feel it was appropriate to submit that late in the day today. And so we've communicated that to the potential buyer, and we're targeting the meeting on the 15th to bring the document as a full agenda item.
Okay. That doesn't indicate there's a lack of progress or anything, is that correct?
No, correct. In fact, just the opposite. We're just trying to fine tune the agreement.
All right, thank you, sir. Item B is to consider a request for exterior alterations for construction of a butterfly garden. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce, who's, he's actually already been introduced tonight, but I'd like to introduce Christian Seacrest, who has reached out to the library board and now to the city council with a request to potentially do an Eagle Scout project on the grounds of the Tonka Noxy Public Library. He's proposing an improvement to the exterior of the building, which by the terms of the city's lease with the library, to utilize that space does require the written approval of the city and the city council. So with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Christian and let him give you a little bit of information. Just for context, we did include in the agenda packet his written materials, which did include, I think, three different plots as options for where it could be located. But happy to answer any questions on the staff perspective. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Seacrest.
Thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Christian Seacrest. I'm a Boy Scout and Tonka Noxy Boy Scout troop. I'm here tonight to give you my proposal for my Eagle project. I would like my Eagle project to be a butterfly garden for the Tonka Noxy Library, and I was told to get permission from the city to do that, which is why I'm here. After doing some research and talking to Chad from Next to Nature, he gave me several ideas of plants to use and not use. I'm currently thinking of putting down landscape fabric in the garden to keep moisture in and weeds out, and probably put a drip tape to help water everything when it gets dry. My big costs right now would be the plants and flowers, landscape fabric, and drip tape. If I have enough money, I would like to add a bird bath and possibly stones, either decorative or stepping stones. My hope is to start building my project late spring of 2022. Let me go over the bullet points of my project in the email that I believe was sent to you before this meeting. If you have any questions for me during my presentation, please stop me and feel free to ask. In the emails I sent to you, I have pictures of examples of what a butterfly garden might look like. Notice that the same species of flowers are grouped together, and that's spread apart. I want to do this to make the garden look full and not have gaps. And due to different species of flowers blooming at different times, by grouping one species of flowers together, you will have an area full of one color. My big purchase items would be the flowers, landscape fabric, drip tape, and mulch. If I have enough money, I would like to add in a bird bath and stones, decorative and stepping. Next, I have maintenance. Once I put in the garden, I do not take care of it. That is why I'm currently waiting for master gardeners in Leavenworth County to confirm that they will be maintaining the garden. They are having their next meeting Tuesday, November 9th. They are supposed to let me know the next day what the decision is, and I can give that information to the library board, which meets on Wednesday, November 10th. The email that I sent to you has the wrong dates, so sorry about that. I know master gardeners are good at their job because they are currently maintaining a butterfly garden in Leavenworth Library, in the base of the library. In the email, there are examples. My budget right now is $800. I have saved this money from several years of fundraising during my, me being in my Boy Scout troop. I am hoping that this will be enough to cover the expenses. However, if it is not, I can ask my family, friends of the library, or the foundation Tonka Noxy Library to help with some of the costs. With inflation, transportation problems, and commodity, I cannot acquire an accurate price on garden until I get closer to the late spring next year, when I'm planning on putting it in. After talking to the board of the library, they mentioned I should ask local places that get rid of some trees for free mulch. I also had a lady at the library meeting mention that she has a bird bath she can donate to my project, which are all things that can cut down the cost of the total project. Also, to help stay in budget, I can make the area smaller so I have less plants to plant. Next, the flower options. I have some, plenty of options of flowers to recommend. Chad from Next Nature also recommended these flowers. These flowers will attract the most butterflies. I also do not plan to plant all of them, but I have plenty of options to choose from, just in case if you don't want me to plant any. Places to put at the library. I talked with Max at the library, and there are a few places that look promising. The measurements listed are the maximum measurements of the plots. The measurements start directly against the concrete. I would most likely use a smaller space, but I wanted to get an idea how big I could go. After talking with the library board, they wanted some design ideas of what I had in mind for the plots. Blow up some rough sketches of designs I had for each plot. In the email, you can go over them, and I gave you legends, and hopefully you can understand them correctly and easily. The plants I have recommended need full sunlight, and these plots give that. However, after doing some measurements and taking a better look at the areas and trees around the plots, plot two and plot three look more promising. They only have a tree on the west side of the plot where the garden would go, so the tree won't block the sun from the plants. On plot two, people from the main street would see it more, and I can make the garden bigger or smaller. Plot three is already small, so it would be easier for me to fill up the whole area with plants. My big equipment would be a tractor and a six-foot tiller. The tiller would, the tiller's tilling depth is eight to six inches. My father would be doing the tilling of the ground since it is a big tractor and large equipment. He has tilled several people's gardens and a few smaller areas that are close to concrete, so he has experience. I also have a few questions for the city regarding the plots I have chosen. Just to make sure, do any of the plots have sprinklers in them? Max said at the library, there are no sprinklers in any of the plots, but I would like to make sure. Are there any plots, any sprinklers in the plots?
I don't think so, but we could confirm that.
Okay. Another one is, how close to the trees will I be able to till? I'm worried about the roots of the tree, and I don't want to hurt the tree at all. And my last one is, how close from the concrete do you want the ground tilled? Is it okay if I go right next to it, or do you want me to leave an inch or a foot of grass between the garden and the concrete? I would like a decision tonight regarding the permission to put a butterfly garden in, for the library. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Seacrest. Can you hang on for a second in case there are questions?
Yes.
Counsel, do you have any questions at all?
Will some of the planning be done close to the intersections?
What do you mean by that? Sorry.
Well, what I'm concerned is if whatever's in the garden grows too tall, if it's close to an intersection, like on Fourth Street and there, and also down on...
Down on your green...
Church Street. I just want to make sure it's low enough that it don't cause any hazard as far as planting it, and you can still see over it or whatever it takes.
Well, I can get rid of some of the very, very tall plants to solve that. And also, I, I don't actually have a vision in my mind to know how tall the plants are going to be, but I do plan to plant the small, short plants closest to the road and the tall plants in the center-ish area, so we can see all the plants. And also, so you have a, you can't see what's around the garden easily.
And it looks like, from the diagrams and the potential locations, none of them would be right up against when you're trying to cross the road.
You know I'm talking about the traffic.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Because you're right down Fourth Street.
Oh, yeah. But no, it looks like none of those are right exactly where you'd be turning onto the road.
I did give plenty of feet away from the sidewalk by the street, just in case of that, too.
I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I think it's an excellent project. When you was concerned about the foot away from the concrete, that might pose a problem as far as mowing it, keeping it up. I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I'd say you want to go right up next to the concrete.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, you'll never be able to get a lawnmower in there. You'll be tilling all the time.
Yeah, it's a great project. Thank you for thinking of it.
So, um...
I agree. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Dale.
I agree about going right up to the concrete. For you construction guys, does that, tilling that close, does that put the concrete at any risk of...
It could.
Tearing up underneath the support structure and all that?
There'll be enough concrete. There'll be enough concrete off the sidewalk to keep him back a little bit regardless.
Yeah.
You'll be all right. I'd say a foot's too far, but I bet you'll get within two or three inches of that sidewalk.
Any other feedback for Mr. Seacrest? No? I think we're all in favor of it. We need tonight off of feedback, questions, and comments, which we've done. Do we want to make a motion, or do we just want to give you, give him just a verbal okay, finalize it with the library, and then come back to the final plan? Which would you guys prefer?
Do we need a motion?
We, I think in terms of process, that's just good feedback to give. And I think what Christian's looking for, to be able to go back to library board, is to report that he did a presentation, and the city council is supportive of it. And then I think ultimately, since the lease is structured the way it is, once the library board approves a plan, then he can return and say this is the final version of it. But while that discussion's going on, I just want to put it out there. We have an aerial picture of the library property, and so we're going to try to display that, to talk about. I know Christian's researched three available plots, but we've kind of talked about how close to the concrete, are there trees in the way? And, you know, we do control that entire site. I mean, it's the city-owned property. And so maybe if there's very specific reasons that you picked those three locations, I might suggest that, looking just outside of the, you can kind of see in the aerial where the sprinkler system runs, and then there's a back patio. I know it's got a little bit of shade, but is there an opportunity to use maybe that western portion of the site where there's less trees and less likelihood of interfering with either curbs or sidewalks or sightlines or anything like that as a potential fourth plot or fifth location?
Can you use, Dan, can you use the cursor to show Christian where you're talking about?
So we, we think that's where all the irrigation is, where the, you can see the sod or the grass. The turf is in good shape, and then it, there's a split right in that area. So is there an opportunity? Because I think that patio accesses right outside of the children's area in the library. And so I understand that maybe that, the building itself casts too much of a shadow to do a full sun-required garden, but maybe if it moved out into the middle of that area. I know that long-term plans were for library expansions and to move the parking lot into different areas, but again, those were longer term. We are carrying currently a 20-year debt on this facility. And so I thought, just when I looked at the aerial, I thought it might warrant some additional conversation about other potential locations.
Okay. Okay, Christian. I think you did a wonderful job with your presentation. Thank you very much. You have a verbal okay from us to go forward with your project. Go to the library board, get them signed off on the final design, and then bring it back here, and then we'll approve it, and then you can get going. Does that sound cool?
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Seacrest, did you have something to add?
Yes, we did discuss with Max, possibly playing it at the patio. However, we actually talked about if the butterfly garden is also, you might come to it. So then we discussed the possibility of, we like the patio to be something where it's visible. And then it might have allergies, eating, not in touch, so then we thought that might have to get rid of it. And we also kind of looked at that area there to be a work pot. And we realized that there's going to be a lot of major work that's going to have to be done. That, that's why we kind of let that show that we like that idea. And then, you know, the biggest spot, space, the smallest space, and then naturally we were concerned that it might not be enjoyed more of a community because it's kind of off by itself. That's why he even kind of recommended those three spots, that people might see it from the street side. Then, overall, the thought I got.
Okay, thank you. I had one more question. Christian, do you have a place where people can donate money if they care to?
No, I don't have any place for anyone can donate money for this project.
Might be something to think about working on, and then we can publicize it and get you some, get you your budget, hopefully.
According to the Boy Scout group book, apparently, I have to get approval on the project. Then I can start worrying about money problems.
If you want to make, somebody want to make a motion just to...
I'll make a motion to approve the Butterfly Garden project, subject to library board approval and final approval of the plans.
Counsel, could, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. I'm looking forward to seeing what you did. Nice job, sir.
Good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I'm glad you mentioned about the bees and moths, because I'm allergic to bees.
All right. That'll be cool. C, consider approval of adjustment to 2021 Police Equipment Fund Expenditure Budget Authority. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is presented at the request of Police Chief Greg Lawson, and it involves the year-end handling of funds in the Police Equipment Fund budget. This fund is a little bit different than our operational fund to support police and other general expenses of the city, the general fund in that case. The Police Equipment Fund, to amend the budget, we simply have to have funds available, and we have to have an emotion approved by the city council to expand or change the budget authority in the current fiscal year. The amount shown in the materials presented tonight with the agenda packet is an increase of $4,409, and that relates to amounts that the fund has simply unexpectedly received near the year end, and that includes a reimbursement by a former employee for the cost of certain equipment, such as ballistic vests, ammunition, things of that nature, as well as the recent sale of two police department vehicles, some of which funds were set aside for next year's approved budget request for three new police vehicles, the equipping of those. But those vehicles did come in significantly higher than anticipated at just over $7,800 each for the two vehicles. And so the police department, when looking ahead at the next two months, did see additional needs and potential costs for things like new vests for new hires, of which there are currently two vacancies, as well as other year-end supply purchases. So what they've asked for is your consideration of this request of a little over $4,000 in expanded expenditure authority. And as you can see in page two of the attachment in the agenda packet, the fund does expect to have a little bit more than $45,000 at year end if this is approved. So there's no negative or precarious impact on fund balance levels. Happy to answer any questions you might have, though. Thank you.
Questions, counsel? Seeing none, is there any discussion or a motion at this point?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2021 expenditure budget amendment for the Police Equipment Fund as listed in the summary of changes to fund with expenditure budget authorized by the city council attachment.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. Thank you, Mr. Hempel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously, Mr. Porter.
Thank you.
Moving on to item D, Resolution 112102. Mr. Brekovic?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. So this item is to set a hearing to determine if the structure located at 723 Yoke Street should be condemned and ordered for repair or demolition pursuant to KSA 12-1750 and Section 8-501 of the Tonka Noxy City Code. So this address should be familiar, because we've very recently taken abatement action on removing junked vehicles, debris, trash, and vegetation. You probably recall that we got there after about a year and eight months of guilty findings in municipal court, appeals filed in district court, and appeals filed in the state of Kansas Appeals Court as well, to get an opportunity to do that. We weren't able to do a full inspection of the structure until all of those items were removed and debris was cleared. And so now that that action has taken place, we've been able to tag and post that structure is unfit for human habitation. In fact, we can't seem to indicate that, once this owner purchased the property, that utilities were ever turned on. And at a very basic level, if there's not utilities provided to the property, then it is declared unfit. The process should also be familiar, because we had to take similar action on a structure that was damaged by a large fire, and the city took the condemnation proceedings on that and ended up doing the demolition on it as well. So in a nutshell, what happens, and this is, again, the culmination of city code and Hannah doing research on the state statutes, just to guarantee that we're giving enough notice to the property owner of actions that need to happen. And so, again, this is the first step. If you pass the resolution tonight, it declares that there will be a public hearing in the future. There are some action items, like the, this resolution as a notice of a public hearing needs to be published in two consecutive publications. And then there needs to be at least 30 days after the last publication before the public hearing can occur. And so when we look at our calendars, that means this item would have a public hearing at the last city council meeting of the year on December 20th. And once those actions are taken, if the property owner wants to take his or her own actions to clean up or demo the site, they can. And if they don't, then the city would, could have the authority, after the city council approves that, to move forward with it, again, in a similar fashion to what we did with the other structure. So in the packets tonight, there's reports from the building inspector, kind of showing you the conditions now that we can see all of the structure. And from a staff perspective, we're asking you to, and recommending that we move forward with the proceedings as outlined.
Okay, counsel, do you have any questions for the city manager?
That's my, it's my understanding, the reason it shows 1121 is the fact that we have two weeks of, or two, at least two weeks of publication involved. Or is that just the resolution number, and that's it?
That's just the resolution number, and actually, because the item 5A was continued into a future meeting, we will amend the resolution, if it's adopted by the city council, to 11-21-01.
Okay.
Instead of 02.
Any other questions?
Does the, does Mr. Williamson say he's going to clean it up, or does he have any comment? It sounds like he appealed, and...
I don't believe he's responded to the notice that he's been given on the structure thus far.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I've driven past it front and down the alley, and it is, looks like the report is very detailed, more detailed than just my view, but it seems to be in line with just an average person on the streets' assessment.
All right, anyone else? I'd be looking for a motion then.
Mayor, I'd like my motion to pass Resolution Number 11-21-02, setting a hearing to determine if the structure located at 723 Yoke Street, Tonka Noxy, Kansas, should be condemned and ordered repaired or demolished.
Thank you, Mr. Hempel. Is there a second?
I second with the addition that the resolution be amended to 11-21-01. Thank you.
Is that acceptable to you, Mr. Hempel?
That is fine.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously. Onto the city manager agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one item tonight for the city manager agenda, and that is the presentation of the 2022 adopted budget book. We're excited that this was completed a few weeks earlier than we're normally able to accomplish that process each year, and hope that you have a chance to review the book. We provided a printed copy for the city council, and we have other copies available at City Hall if anyone should need to look at that. We also then will publish this 2022 budget book on the city website and include links that let people jump straight to the pages of most interest to them. In terms of the format and the contents, we don't have any brand-new items this year, but I think last year we did a shakeup that really added some value to folks with the debt pro forma section that's now much more detailed, examines our debt ratio, examines amortization schedules for all of the city's long-term obligations. And then again, the department pages each break down current budget year initiatives, I guess for next year in this case, and provide a lot of that detail for anyone curious about the various funded programs and services of the city. But happy to take any feedback you have. We're always looking for ways to improve this, but its goal is to be the best communication tool for our residents and business owners to be able to look at and understand where the city's headed next year. And we're excited to get started. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions, counsel?
Thanks for putting all of that together. I know it was a lot of work.
Yes, it is. Okay. Any further comments? Okay, any further comments? Thank you so much. Moving onward to the city attorney agenda. Ms. Krista, do you have anything?
I have no items, Mayor.
I butchered your name again, I'm sorry. Item G, Mayor Pro Tem agenda?
Well, the only thing I might add is, Planning and Zoning Commission, and the county commissioners are reviewing their comprehensive plan. And there'll probably be some updates on it. And some of them will evolve pretty close to the city, so it's always something to keep an eye on for the city.
Thank you. H, city council agenda. Anyone have anything to report?
I'd like to, I'd like to talk a minute about purple streetlights. I know we've got at least one. Do we know how many, how many we have?
In our conversation with Public Works, we think it's the one down by the water park.
And I guess they're all just, I mean, certainly, there's a whole lot of cities with a whole lot more than we have. They're just defective lights, is it, do we even know?
I think the, whatever G put out on that was, it is a defect in the LED bulb that causes a purplish glow. And as a KU alum, it does bother me to the core to see that, but there is, they do have a plan, but like you mentioned, there's, they haven't given us a firm date on when they're going to come and replace that one bulb for us.
Yeah. Man, one bulb, get it knocked out. Be the top of the list.
That's right.
Okay, is that everything, Jake? Anything else? Let's remember that KU remark when it's time for his evaluation. I don't have anything. I wish you all luck tomorrow. We have a heck of a team. And I, I, just good luck with the election and whatever happens.
Welcome to Dixie.
Welcome.
You're welcome. With that, Mr. Dale?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, go Chiefs.